Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Temple City Council. It's currently a little after five, and so let's go ahead and get started. Please rise as Mayor Protem Judy Morales leads us in the invocation tonight, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by City Secretary Jen Llewellyn.
Join me, please. Dear Lord, we continue to, as we continue to today, please help us to look to Jesus, our Overcomer, and find strength in Him. We give you our worries and fears and struggles, and we ask that you transform our thinking on things that are praiseworthy and thoughts that will honor and please you. Lord, we lift up our hurting country to you and for your blessings today. We ask that you continue to have your hand on this nation and that leaders are godly examples to all, and we bless our leaders both nationally and locally, our mayor, our city, our city council, and city staff, and our citizens with the wisdom to guide us in the right direction that will bring peace and harmony in our community. We pray for those who are hurting or lonely today, that you will comfort them. We pray for those who are ill, that you will heal them, Father, especially those suffering from the coronavirus and other illnesses. Give blessings and protection to all the first responders, the doctors, the nurses, the police, and all those who are working to help and give comfort to those who are hurting. We pray that our minds and hearts will not be shaken by these circumstances, but that we will lean harder into your presence, your peace, your power, and your love. Thank you for being our hope and our strength today, Father, and we thank you and we love you. We ask this all in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both very much. A little deviation from the posted agenda. Governor Abbott and the state has allowed cities not to have a public comment section during this COVID pandemic, but the city of Temple has decided to not to go ahead and restart those. So if you have signed up, I believe we have one, Ms. Thompson, if you signed up prior to this meeting to speak, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Bobby Thompson, 904 South Henderson Street. I would like to thank Mayor Davis, Ms. Meyer, Judy Morales, and the City Council for Avenue Eight being mowed, all the brush and debris being moved from our area so we can still be a community in unity in each step. Also, thanks for the new elevator. Keep up the good work. God is watching.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. You usually bring a positive message, and I appreciate that tonight very much. Moving on to the next item, which is the awards and special recognition item. We would like to recognize the Temple Independent School District. Ms. Long has a proclamation that she would like to read along with some other comments, I'm sure.
What did that? Thank you, Mayor. The school board is very, very, very dear to my heart, as many of you in the room know. But I wanted, before I read the proclamation, I want to just give you a little bit of history as why we have a proclamation tonight. So I'm gonna just read what I prepared for explanation. The TISD School Board has been chosen by Region 12 as the School Board of the Year. They were chosen because they did, the district met the, in quotes, meet standard rating and has also increased district Texas Education Agency rating. Both of these successes are due to the board's leadership along with the district's outstanding staff. Our board is one of the most diverse in the state and truly represents our great and diverse community. So, thank you, Dan Puzzi, School Board President, in the back. For those of you who don't know Dan, please wave, Dan. And thank you, Dr. Ott, Superintendent of the District. I think Virginia is here, Virginia Suarez from the school board. Is there anybody else here? Wave and say hi. You're a stranger, and we're happy to see you. I'm sorry I didn't see you come in. We're glad to have all of you. So now let me read the proclamation. It's such an honor to be able to read this for all of you. In association, this is the proclamation from the Office of Mayor, City of Temple. Whereas the Association of School Administrators has chosen Temple Independent School District Board of Trustees as a 2020 Region 12 School Board of the Year. Texas superintendents who are TASA members and meet other criteria may nominate their board trustees for the TASA School Board Awards. Whereas the Texas Association of School Administrators School Board Award Program was established in 1971 to recognize the dedication and service of school boards that make a positive impact on schoolchildren in Texas. Their mission is to focus on professional learning, advocacy, and member engagement, is to promote and provide and develop leaders who create and sustain student-centered schools and develop future-ready students. Whereas for the first time since 2011, all campuses in the district met the standard, and Temple is now the running, to be named one of the five school boards chosen as a 2020 Texas Honor Board. Out of the five, one will be named Texas Outstanding School Board. And whereas local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child while also working closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. Now, therefore, I, Susan Long, on behalf of Timothy A. Davis, Mayor of the City of Temple, Texas, do recognize the Temple Independent School District Board of Trustees for their dedication and hard work on modeling an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's students, or children, excuse me. In testimony whereof, I witnessed my hand in the seal of the City of Temple of Texas this sixth day of August 2020. And the mayor Timothy A. Davis has signed it, signed also by the City Secretary Jen Llewellyn. We're not doing pictures, sorry, because of COVID, but this will be here. I'll give this to you, and you'll pass it to them at the appropriate time. Thank you. We welcome, we thank you all. There's not enough, there aren't enough words to say thank you for everything you've done, all of you.
On behalf of the city, thank you all so much, both current and former board members. The partnership that the school district and the city have is, I would say, unraveled probably across the state. We work hand in hand, and we do a lot of planning together, and it's always for the betterment and the progression of the city and the students. So thank you for your good work, and thank you for your partnership very much. Thank you all.
Y'all have on our Wildcat blue for you, too.
Yes, please do. Step to the podium, Dan.
Thank you for honoring us, honoring us with the recognition that we receive from Region 12. Just to make sure, let you know, our school board, some of our school board members took the air tonight. Ronnie Gaines, the school board vice president, Virginia Suarez is here, our school board secretary. Shannon Galloway, school board member, is here. We also have Lynette Davis, Shannon Myers, and Sania Santi on the board. So again, thank you, but this is, this honor is really, when I say it's a team of eight, it's the seven school board members and our superintendent, Dr. Bobby Ott. He really, we work together with administration, he and his team, and our board members are very collaborative, very open. And really, this honor is honor for the school board, but really, I think it's an honor for the school district itself. Shows that we're progressing, and we're looking out for the interest of our students, teachers, staff, and the community members. And again, also, I want to say, thank you very much for the collaboration y'all have done with the school district. It's important to the community, important to us, and just want to thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Puzzi, let me go ahead and give this to you. Thanks again. Very good.
Ain't nobody that's slowly walking.
Never made a microphone.
I get cut off all the time, anyway. I just want to thank the council, Mayor Davis, the administration, the city, for our partnership. And we're just grateful. The school district's in great hands under the leadership of this board. And to be recognized by the Texas Association, that's just very powerful. So thank you, and this will bode well for the city. Thank you so much.
Keep up the good work. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Okay, before we go any farther, I just wanted a quick shout out to a couple of our staff. Buford Craig and Justin Brantley have really stepped up for me the last two weeks. I've received a number of citizen requests, and these two guys and those that work with them have done an amazing job and have made me and the city very proud. So I just wanted to publicly thank them for that.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Moving on to item number four is the budget and public hearings. Item number four reads, "Consider adopting a resolution authorizing the council to place a proposal to adopt a tax rate of .06525 cents per $100 valuation on August 13, 2020." Ms. Bernard?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, before you, I had the calendar for the budget process that we started back January 9th and 10th with the council retreat, been through several dates. On June 25th, the city manager filed the budget with the city secretary. We've had several meetings and public hearings related to the budget since then. An important date was July 17th or 20th, where we actually received the certified tax rule. We were able to get our tax rate calculations, and in the budget that was filed, the tax rate was based on a tax increase of about, or the tax base increase of 10.32%, and the actual increase came in at 14.26%. And with that, we were able to adjust the tax rate without, with minimal impact on our budget. The general fund, it was 30-something thousand less dollars. And in the INS fund, we were able to adjust some debt amortization. But what you have before you tonight is a tax rate that is proposed at 65.25 cents. The general M&amp;O tax rate is 30 cents, which is a decrease from what was filed and what was in the proposed budget of last year, or in the adopted budget last year, 97 cents. The debt rate decreased by 1.05 cents, with a total of 2.02 cents. I just, this year is the first year under the calculations that we were enacted with Senate Bill 2. It changed a lot of, no new revenue tax rate used to be the effective tax rate. That rate was calculated to be 62.52 cents. And the voter approval tax rate is what used to be the rollback rate. Now we're subject to a 3.5% cap on that. It was calculated at 66.87 cents. And the proposed rate is actually a dollar, 1.62 cents below the voter approval tax rate. And that rate does get carried forward to the next year. Again, it just states that unused increment rate of 1.62 cents. Just if there was no increase on a $100,000 home, no increase in value, which we did see increases in value in homes, but the decrease in the total tax levy would be $20.20 or a year, or $1.68 per month. As I mentioned, the process and timelines required for meeting dates, publication of notices, and special motion language is governed by state law through the truth and taxation and also by our city charter. And this item does require a vote, and it does, by adoption of this resolution, it establishes the record vote for the proposed tax rate that will be published. You have to answer any questions related to that?
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. We had the same presentation in workshop, and we had some discussion there. But Council, do you have any additional questions, comments for Ms. Bernard? Nothing? All right, then there being none, I will entertain a motion on item number four.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the council to place a proposal to adopt a tax rate of 65.25, or 65.25 cents on August 13, 2020, in a special city council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams, a second by Councilmember Morales. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Long?
Aye.
Councilmember Walker?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Morales?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye. Moving on to item number five, which is to conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed tax rate of .6525 cents per $100 valuation. I said that wrong. Conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed tax rate of .6525 per $100 valuation for fiscal year 2021, which is, begins in the 2020 tax year. Ms. Myers and Ms. Bernard?
Hi, Mayor and Council. I'd be happy to do a presentation if you are interested in that. This proposed, or this public hearing is specifically on the tax rate, which Tracy just went over with you. Of course, the tax rate supports the proposed budget that you have in consideration at your special meeting on August 13. So if you would like a presentation, I'd be happy to do that. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council?
Good.
Bye. I'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Karen Kowalski. I'm 1411 Westwood Hills, City of Temple. I do applaud you at least rolling it back to proposing to 6525. My thing is, I don't think that really is enough. The old, no new tax revenue rate is considerably lower. We all know property tax values have increased significantly over the last two years. We ran in certain times, the pandemic, businesses, and people are hurting. The systems general are hurting. We are cutting salaries. We are cutting hours. We are cutting out all of the time. Businesses all over, not just where I work, Los Angeles and Art has let people go, Scott and Mike has let people go. Small businesses, none of the businesses have opened, and none of them have ever opened yet. Mom and pop shops have shut down. We are losing money. We are bleeding it. 75% on the last half of TISD of those students are in a household that qualifies for free and reduced charges. 75%. It's only 42% in Delta. It depends on the west side of the country. A lot of that, I think, is helped by that. That's just my guess. To qualify for free and reduced charges of family of four makes a household, not one, but the household is, everybody in the household is under 48,000 or 10,000. So 75% of our students, almost all of them live in Temple, are a big portion of them. Well, five of them. That's a lot. And those people are some of the ones that are cutting their hours cut and are losing their jobs. They are really going to be hurting. I think more will not continue, they will pass along these tax increases as soon as they get their next tax bill. Their rents, as soon as they can, will go up. And a lot of them don't have a lease of the year or two years. They rent lots and lots, a lot of them, and they're going to, they're going to have their rent increased. A two-cent cut in the tax rate is, it's a little over two cents. It's a cut, but with the increase, I don't, a lot of those houses, and a lot of them were in the fatter town where it was smaller and the rent increases were larger. So they're going to, they're going to feel it. So what I want to think is that we should consider whether it's responsibly responsible to not reconsider cutting that just a little bit more, to pump the brakes on spending, to pump the brakes on getting budgeted salary increases in a lot of our departments across the line, Adam, in the over 10% range, the salary line did increase. And I'm just comparing year over year on the budget, but it's straight out of the budget plan. Whether the taxpayers will think that is the right thing to do. I don't, but personally, I'm not that affected. I'm not, it's not, this is not about me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kowalski. Anyone else?
I'm Richard Arwood, 905 here at Boyd Trail. I know y'all probably tired of hearing this, but this is where we beat the dead horse a little bit. I know this year has been terrible. It's been unprecedented as far as what the pandemic and economy has done. But I just wanted to talk about the last nine years. In 2011, our tax rate was .5679. Last year, it was .6772. That's an increase of over 19%, or 19%. In 2011, average home value was 142,000. This past year, it's 191,000. That's an average increase of about 34%. If you compound those two and the effect it has on the citizens of the town over the last nine years, that's a 60% increase. That is way more than any cost of living or raise that anybody that works and lives in this town would get over that same period. I just want you to consider, like Ms. Kowalski, what you can do to lower that tax rate to give regular citizens a break. Thank you, Arwood.
Anyone else? Very much. At this time, I'll close this public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't think about that. Anybody on the virtual platform? Nobody? At this time, I will, I will close this public hearing. Thank you to those that spoke. Moving on to item number six and seven, we'll read those in together. It's a first reading in a public hearing to consider, item number six is to consider adopting an ordinance approving the tax rule and authorizing calculation of the amount of tax that can be determined for all real and personal property in the city for the fiscal year 2021. And item number seven is also the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance setting a tax rate of .6525 per $100 valuation, comprised of .3 for maintenance and operations and .3525 for debt service for fiscal year 2021, which is a tax year 2020, making the appropriation for the regular operation of the city. Ms. Myers and, oh, I'm sorry, there you are.
Chief Mayor and Council. The property tax rule, again, this is the first reading. Again, item number six, the proposed ordinance will adopt the total tax rule, which is $6.1 billion. It includes the City of Temple, which is $4.9 billion, the freeze taxable values of $622 million, or a total adjusted value of $5.5 billion, which is a 14.2% raise or increase over the previous year. And then the tax increment district values, which is the City of Temple or the reinvestment zone number one, is a total of $567.6 million for an increase of 15.87% in value. And the total of those two combined, the City of Temple and the reinvestment zone, equals a $6.1 billion, which is 14.41% increase in value. Item number seven, which was the tax rate, again, we just went over the proposed tax rate is 65.25 cents, a decrease of 2.02 cents from what was filed in last year's tax rate. Looking at our values, the average annual increase in values have been 5.75% over the past 10 years. This year, increasing to 14.26%. As we know, we've had some very significant commercial and industrial developments in City of Temple. Plus, last year, in our new value, I think we had over 800 new homes added to the tax rule, and that is exceeding what we've done historically, which is again adding to that growth in our tax base. Real quickly, we went over this in the work session, but out of the total market value of our tax base of $8.2 billion, 45% of it's single-family, 35.17% is commercial-industrial. Looking at the new value that was added to the property tax rule of $232 million, 53% of that was single-family, and then a little less than 20% land and lots. Commercial and industrial utilities were 18.43% of that new value that was added. As we went over this in detail, too, in the work session, there's $490.2 billion. It's under ARB review, still hasn't the date of the certification. And the majority of that was commercial. And when you look at dollars, the majority of that, I think it's 50-something percent, was related to commercial industrial properties. 10% was single-family. You look at the numbers, 42% of it, based on numbers, it was 42% land and lots, 27% single-family, and 24% commercial-industrial. This chart shows our historic tax rates. I believe this one goes back to 2012. As you'll note, in the total tax rate, the gray bar is the M&amp;O rate, and that is the rate that's subject to the, when you're calculating your effective or no new tax rate for M&amp;O. That is, in years past, was limited to the 8%. This year was the first year it was limited to the 3.5%. And as you know, that stayed either decreased or stayed low. The increase in the tax rate is attributed to voter-approved debt, or debt that's subject to voter approval. And that, I believe it's 11.75 cents over the past seven years that has added to the tax rate related to the parks bonds that were voter-approved. It includes the 2008 parks bond, still debt service on those. And then our $174 million TCIP program is being funded with just a little over 6.75 cents on the tax rate. So that is where you're seeing the increase in our, in the tax rate. I'd be happy to answer any questions related to that.
Council, any questions?
Ms. Bernard, would you back up one slide, please?
Yes.
The M&amp;O is the gray on the bottom of that chart, right?
Yes.
And so that has stayed fairly stable since 2012, has it not?
Yes.
Okay, and your point was that the increase that started in 2016, 2017, came from bond issues?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just want to clarify.
Not to complicate, but when you calculate the no new tax rate, or what used to be the effective rate, it doesn't differentiate between unaffected, I mean, between INS and M&amp;O.
Understand.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Both items six and seven are subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on either one of those matters may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record, or if there's anyone on the virtual platform. Anyone virtually? All right, very good. Then there being no one wishing to speak on these items, then I'll entertain a motion for approval on item number six.
Motion to approve item six?
Second.
Have, uh, motion by Councilmember Walker, a second by Councilmember Long. Madam Secretary?
Long?
Aye.
Councilmember Walker?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Mayor Portimorales?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Moving on to item number seven, um, I'll entertain a motion for approval on that item.
Motion to approve item seven as presented by Ms. Bernard.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Long, a second by Councilmember Walker. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Long?
Aye.
Councilmember Walker?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Mayor Portimorales?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Moving on to item number eight is the, uh, final public hearing to consider adopting a resolution approving the proposed community development block grant, uh, Plan 2020 through 2024 consolidation plan, analysis of the impediments to fair housing, the 2020 through 24 citizen participation plan, and the 2020 annual action plan, including funding recommendations. Ms. Glover?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I did go through this presentation in its entirety during the July sixteenth council meeting, so we wanted to give you the option. I do have the presentation ready, and I can go through that again if you'd like to see it again, or I can just open it up for questions.
Councilmembers who want to see the presentations?
A good presentation.
Questions? Hit the not off?
Yay!
Thank you, um, you and your team's work on this. I know a lot of it's compliance, but I also know that your hearts are in this kind of work.
Love it, for sure.
And really important, really important to the city.
All right. This, uh, this item is also subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please, uh, do so. Step to the podium and state your name and address for the record, or raise your hand, um, in the virtual platform. Anybody? All right. There being none, then I will, uh, I'll close this public hearing and entertain a motion on item number eight.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Morales. We have a second by Councilmember Williams. Uh, Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Long?
Aye.
Councilmember Walker?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Mayor Portimorales?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Moving on to item number nine is the first and final reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Temple Texas Limited Tax Notes in one or more series, approving official statements, agreement and agreements related to the sale and issuance of the notes and the form of paying agent and registrar agreement establishing the procedures for selling and delivering one or more series of the notes and authorizing other matters related to the notes. That's item number nine. And item number 10, uh, is the first and final reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Temple Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation in one or more series, approving official statements, agreements related to the sale and issuance of the certificates in the form of paying the agent registrar agreement establishing the procedures for selling and delivering one or more series of the certificates and authorizing other matters related to the certificates. Mrs. Bernard, you sneak up on me. I'm used to looking over there.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I had to sneak up because I can't, I don't want to trip coming over here. I'm kind of clumsy sometimes. Uh, just in simplest terms, uh, that was a lot to read on those two, uh, items. The, this is, uh, a delegation ordinance authorizing the issuance of the limited tax notes, Series 2020, and a, uh, combination of, uh, tax and revenue COs. Uh, each ordinance will, each ordinance will designate the Director of Finance or in her absence, the City Manager as the pricing officer to execute pricing certificates and finalize pricing within the parameters defined in the attached ordinance. Is it, the ordinances are attached and they're pretty detailed, but I wanted to go through just some highlights. Uh, the not to exceed amount, uh, on the COs is twenty-one million nine hundred and fifty thousand. The not to exceed amount on the limited tax notes is three point five million. The maximum maturity, um, on the COs is to not go past August of 2042, but we do plan, we're planning on a twenty-year issue. And the limited tax notes are August 2027. By law, they cannot, uh, be, uh, exceed seven years. And the date that you start counting the seven years is when the Attorney General's Office approves them. Just the, just a summary of what the proceeds will be used for on the, uh, COs. There's three different, uh, uses, uh, it's funding the, the mobility, which is the transportation of fifteen million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The payback source for those are, is an INS tax pledge. It's included in your proposed INS rate, uh, term of twenty years. It also includes the drainage COs. Uh, they're, they have a tax pledge, but they are to be supported by the drainage fees that are currently in place, uh, and that issue amount is four point three million. Again, those will be twenty-year bonds. And then the CIP facility COs, uh, total two point four million. That is an INS tax pledge, and the term on those bonds will be total of fifteen years. Uh, the equipment of three point five million is paid back with general fund revenues of the sanitation system or other general fund revenues, and again, seven years on that term. It's out of the list of, uh, some of the projects that are listed in the, are being funded with the fifteen point two million. It's known as Zelia Drive, Lavendusky, uh, Cost Share in Sanders Farm Road. That's a cost sharing agreement of four point seven million, uh, funding of the pavement preservation program of two point five million. Avenue D Connections and Alley, uh, design right away and construction, uh, Phase Two, uh, Kegley Roads and right away, or relocation expenses associated with the private utility of one point six million. And then Poison Oak Road, it's designed and right away. Uh, the Mobility Master Plan, uh, for seven hundred thousand. Now, I won't read the smaller ones. Uh, with the drainage improvements of four point three million, uh, the Westgate Edition, uh, design right away and construction of two point three million. Pepper Creek Tributeary Three, uh, construction of one point four million. The Thompson Edition, there's, uh, dollars allocated for thirty percent design on that. And then Inverness Road Design, and then just a contingency of three hundred and thirty-five thousand. Next, the equipment, uh, relates to our sanitation system, garbage trucks, front load, and residential trucks, uh, and also some, uh, big higher dollar equipment in the street and parks department. I just, uh, a timeline of events, as you recall, on, uh, May, May twenty-first, we authorized, uh, resolution directing publication of the notice of intent to issue the COs. Uh, those notices appeared in the, or the notice appeared on May twenty-eighth and June, June fourth in the newspaper. Here we are tonight with, uh, requesting the delegation authority. Uh, we're, uh, next week, we're, um, expecting that the standard course, we get assigning a bond rating to the COs and the limited tax notes. And then on August eighteenth, actual sale of the notes and the bonds or certificates, and then actually close and funds delivered on September second. Uh, through this process, we do, uh, have, uh, engaged, uh, our financial advisor, Dan Webmiller, was specialized public financing. And Carol Palumbo, our bond counsel, with McCall, Parkhurst and Horton, they helped, uh, through all of this transaction and all of the documents required to go to market and issue these bonds. And I'd be happy to answer any questions related to either one of those.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Council and questions for Ms. Bernard? Nothing? Thank you, ma'am. Um, both of these items, items nine and 10 are subject to public hearing, and we'll do, uh, one public hearing for both items. So anyone wishing to speak on this item, uh, please step to the podium to do so, uh, or raise your hand on the virtual platform. Nothing? Just to reiterate, the repayment of these bonds is, um, already worked into the current, um, INS rate.
Right.
Yes. Okay. Then, um, at this time, I'll close the public hearing, and, uh, I'll entertain a motion on item number nine.
Make a motion to approve item nine?
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Williams. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Long?
Aye.
Councilmember Walker?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Mayor Portimorales?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion on item number 10.
Motion to approve item 10 as has been presented by Ms. Bernard.
Second.
Have a, uh, motion by Councilmember Long. We have a second by Councilmember Morales. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Long?
Aye.
Councilmember Walker?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Mayor Portimorales?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Moving on now to consent agenda. All items listed under, uh, the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired, uh, by the council, any item may be removed from this consent agenda by council member for, uh, consideration separately. Councilmember, if there's anything you'd like to remove to discuss? Okay, there, uh, there no, there being no request for removal, we'll entertain a motion on item number one, A, through item number one. It says eleven double A. Is that correct? Is that just one? Okay. Then we'll, uh, entertain a motion on item number one, A, through item eleven, double A.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, items one, A, eleven, A, through eleven, double A.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Long and a second by Councilmember Walker. Madam Secretary?
Long?
Aye.
Councilmember Walker?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Mayor Portimorales?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye. I'm sorry, that should have, I should have read that in. It's eleven, A, through eleven, double A.
Okay. Now we're to our regular agenda. First item is a, uh, the second and final reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning from agriculture to single family two on four point two, five, four acres, general retail on ten point seven, three, five plus or minus acres, and a planned development, general retail with the development site plan on five point one, eight, four plus or minus acres, being a total of twenty point one, seven, three plus or minus acres located on the west side of State Highway ninety-five, approximately two hundred and sixty feet south of its intersection with Barnhart Road in Bell County, Texas. Mr. Chandler?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So just as a reminder, this is the, a, a public hearing because of an additional condition, um, that was approved at the first reading. And so I've, I've got in white, um, all the original conditions and, um, and also just a reminder as to where exactly this is located. You can see, uh, the property to the right. And then number three is the additional condition added at first reading, uh, which was to, uh, require planning and zoning review and city council approval for the site plan and elevations of any future self-storage, um, on-site. Uh, that's for the five acre, five point one, four, uh, five point one, eight, four acre tract. So I'd be happy to answering questions or go through any additional, uh, slides if you will desire.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Council any thoughts on this item? We discussed it at length, the last council meeting. Anything else?
Uh, Mayor, I'm the, the council member who added or asked for help in adding the, um, the language, and I'd like to thank Brian for the reminder on, on bringing it all to our, to the forefront again with the reminder. It's very helpful. Thank you so much.
All right. There being no further comments from, uh, council, I'll open the public hearing. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone on the virtual platform, please raise your hand. Virtual hand. Nothing? Okay. Then at this time, I will, uh, close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item number twelve.
Mayor, I'll make the motion, um, per the staff recommendation on item twelve to, um, include the, um, additional items that were, uh, highlighted in yellow. Do I need to be more specific than that, Brian?
That should cover it.
Thank you.
Staff recommendation. We have a, uh, motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Long. We have a second by Councilmember Walker. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Long?
Aye.
Councilmember Walker?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Mayor Portimorales?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Item thirteen is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing an amendment to ordinance twenty eighteen dash forty-nine oh seven to allow townhouses instead of duplexes as planned development conditions on Lot Twelve, Block One, Reserve at P Ridge, Phase One subdivision addressed as nineteen forty-five South P Ridge Road. Mr. Chandler?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the applicant for this case is Yalgoe Engineering on behalf of WBW Development, and this is for the Reserve at P Ridge Development in nineteen forty-five South P Ridge Road. Planning and zoning commission, uh, recommended approval for this on July sixth. And so if you look to the left here, you can see, uh, within the overall, um, Reserve at P Ridge Development, where this piece of property is, and then it fronts on the newly realigned, uh, South P Ridge Road, uh, which was a developer participation agreement with WBW, uh, to make those improvements. And so when you look to the right, you can see a little more detail that, uh, this tract of land, uh, is in the middle of actually what are to be duplexes around the outside, basically fronting, uh, Guffy Lane and Lively Lane, which were, as you recall, the original, uh, South P Ridge Road alignments. And so this is from a planned development, uh, district zoning case that was created in, um, or adopted in two thousand and eighteen. And the site plan that you see to the right was adopted as part of that ordinance. And so you can just see the newly aligned, uh, South P Ridge and just, uh, a note that, you know, option of duplexes, sixty feet minimum in width. And so the applicant wants to, um, substitute the middle of that, uh, tract with townhomes rather than duplexes. And so just as a reminder that the planned development, uh, district is a flexible zoning overlay and, uh, and, but it also has a binding site plan, and so that's why this is back to you all, that, uh, significant change in the site plan. And just a quick reminder about, uh, the difference between duplexes and townhomes. Duplexes are essentially two-family, um, residential units under the same roof with an attached shared wall. Uh, townhomes, um, have a minimum of, uh, three units, residential units, uh, with shared walls. Uh, they're often two stories, and the ones that are proposed are two-story, but they can be single story as well, and they are, um, will have a, a single family living in each unit. And the townhouse, townhouse substitution does not conflict with the approved residential density. And so if we look at the site plan, top left-hand corner, here is South P Ridge Road, the new alignment, and you can see that, um, here is a, um, driveway off of South P Ridge, entry and exit, and, uh, parking spaces here, landscaping, and nine, uh, townhome units around the perimeter. And you will also see that it appears that there is another entrance here off South P Ridge Road, but that would just be for security, um, emergency. emergency vehicle access. So there'd be a gate there. And also four-foot minimum sidewalk. And to the right, you can see what those floor plans would look like. And you can see the proposed building elevations. And so in compliance, in the compliance summary with the comprehensive plan, is compliant with future land use map through the enhanced landscaping and buffering compatible with the surrounded uses and zoning. Public facilities are available and it's compliant with the thoroughfare plan. And we addressed all of those with the original ordinance, but it's just a reminder. And certainly, this would be not an increase in density from if they were to put duplexes on that same location. So six notices were sent out representing thirty-three properties, many of them still for the owned by the developer. One notice was returned in agreement, one in disagreement. And so you can see the agreement for that property owner is along Lively, and the disagreement is along Guffy. And staff recommends approval of the proposed planned development amendment along with the site plan, and I should say elevations, with the following conditions. Substantial compliance with those graphics renderings. The sidewalk along South P Ridge Road constructed with a minimum of four feet in width to comply with our current collector standards. Compliance in accordance with chapter twelve related to emergency access and fire lanes that all planned development conditions described in the current ordinance twenty eighteen forty-nine oh seven still apply. And that the Director of Planning and Development happens to be me may be authorized some discretion to approve minor changes. And especially, we called out really in coordination with the Fire Marshal if anything related to the emergency access were to change. And then lastly, that significant changes to the elevations or site plan would return to planning and zoning and city council. So P and Z recommended approval on July sixth, unanimous approval, seven to zero per staff's recommendation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. But I know the applicant is here, Josh Welch from WBW. If you had a question for him.
Thank you. Councilee thoughts or questions on this one?
I wondered what Mr. Welch was going to do with that triangle. But that softening of P Ridge is really nice. I think that makes a big difference. It's much more safe. Appreciate that.
Anything else?
I have none.
This item is subject to a public hearing. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record or raise your hand on the virtual platform.
You've been there, Council. My name is Josh Welch. We're the applicant here on this potential site plan project. Where the discussion with staff, which kind of came about is redoing P Ridge and all the improvements that cities want to make down in that area. It's triangles, of course, the shape and how what got left with us realigning P Ridge, which got a little bit difficult to work with. And so but I think what we came up with and working through the site plan and the comments with staff and some of them going back and forth, I think this will, the project and the product ended up looking, I think, a lot better for P Ridge right there with some of the landscaping and the trees that we're going to plant there along the, you can see on the site plan running along P Ridge. And then I think the townhome product was going to be in there. There's going to be a benefit to the area. And I said it would be pretty pleasing. So we're excited about it. And I'd be happy to answer your questions over there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, there being no one, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item number thirteen.
Make a motion to approve item thirteen.
Second motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Long. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Hi.
Councilmember Walker.
Hi.
Councilmember Williams.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Morales.
Hi.
Mayor Davis.
Hi.
Item fourteen is a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning from agriculture to neighborhood services on two tracts of land separated by Tanglehead Drive, being a combined total of one point nine seven plus or minus acres. Both tracks address as four hundred Old Waco Road. Mr. Chandler.
All right, thanks again, Mayor. And the applicant for this case is Ruben Merrick on behalf of West End Joint Venture. And once again, this is a four hundred Old Waco Road. Planning and zoning commission reviewed this one on July sixth as well. And just if we look at the maps to the right, just to orient you to where exactly these two pieces of property that are split by Tanglehead Drive are located. So along Old Waco Road and backing up to some existing single-family homes. The subdivision required, obviously, plating would be required prior to development. No development has been identified by the applicant to date that we're aware of. However, they're looking at marketing the site, if approved, towards childcare, martial arts studios. So those type of neighborhood services that are allowed within the N S zoning designation. And while this is not something that the city can enforce, we wanted to make sure that you all knew, and this was brought up to planning and zoning commission, that there was some opposition from surrounding neighbors due to the fact that this property still is deed restricted for non-residential uses. But once again, we cannot enforce that. And so we and P and Z focused on the land use and whether it's appropriate for that location. Ultimately, the owner decided to proceed with the rezoning, understanding that the deed restrictions would have to change in the future if zoning is approved. So looking at the zoning map.
Chandler, before you go on, what's the process and who's responsible for getting the deed restrictions changed?
Sure, it's, I haven't seen that set of deed restrictions, but it would be with the property owners, whichever property owners initially were part of those deed restrictions. And so it becomes a private mechanism of enforcement or changing them, usually based on a majority of property ownership. And whether that's number of owners or area of land that they own, you know, there are some differences between sets of deed restrictions. But ultimately, it would be up to the property owners who were part of those original deed restrictions.
If they're the part of the original deed restrictions, and if the property's been, you know, bought and sold a few times, that happens, but they sign off on those deed restrictions as the new owners, correct? So it doesn't necessarily go back to the original owners, the original, I guess, the originators of the restrictions. It's whoever owns the property now.
Right. They do typically run with the land.
Yeah, okay.
So Brian, just to follow up on the mayor's question, because I had the exact same question. The Ruben Merrick is applying for this on behalf of West End Joint Venture. Does West End Joint Venture own the property now?
Yes, that is my understanding.
So they, the deed restrictions are theirs, but they're applying so we can assume that their application, they want to change their deed.
Correct.
I mean, I realize I'm making assumptions.
Right, that's, I think those would be correct assumptions.
Is there anything we could do inadvertently that would complicate that deed restriction change or? You know, can we get into a he said, she said type thing by accident?
Not that I can think of, but Kathy, I'll defer to you from a legal perspective.
I can, I can hear her.
He's not happy though because it's not recording.
Oh, 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 okay.
I'm quiet even with the microphone. But again, your obligation is to consider only the land use. And then it's between the property owners at the time of plating and development to take care of those deed restrictions.
As long as we're not backing into something by accident
Right.
and causing complications, then I guess we don't worry about anything.
Correct. As long as you stick with your role, which is considering land use under your zoning regulations, then you'll be fine.
Sorry, we jointly interrupted you totally.
Very good questions. It's somewhat unusual. So when you look at the zoning map, you can see the ag zoning, agricultural zoning represented by the green. And it's immediately to the east of existing single-family homes, single-family three zone properties. And so the fact that this property is along Old Waco Road, major arterial, I'm not sure when the deed restrictions were established, but certainly the conditions out here have changed. You've got that section of a major arterial, the outer loop, and the recent extension of Tanglehead Drive to make that connection to the outer loop. And so we are showing that as compliant with the zoning map. Future land use, we are showing that the existing future land use in current comprehensive plan, choices oh eight, shows this as auto-urban residential. And so, you know, obviously, this non-residential use would not be supported by the existing designation. However, with the comprehensive plan that's under development and the future development plan associated with it that is really responding to the growth in Temple, which is the reason why we need one after twelve years, you know, responds to these changes of Old Waco Road, its construction as a section of the outer loop, extension of Tanglehead. And so it's showing that as residential slash neighborhood services. And so what they're proposing is completely compliant with the proposed future development plan. So we're showing partial compliance. Existing water and sewer, eight-inch water line along Tanglehead and twelve-inch along the outer loop and ten-inch sewer line is compliant, thoroughfare plan and trails. Tanglehead is currently designated as a local street, but once again, it was not connected to the outer loop in two thousand and eight when the current thoroughfare plan was created. And so the proposed thoroughfare plan shows it as a collector, a neighborhood collector. And so in terms of the Trails Master Plan, the Old Waco Road Outer Loop thoroughfare is on the Trails Master Plan. And so the ten-foot sidewalks that would be required actually have been constructed on both sides of the outer loop. So you can see what that site looks like. And you can see Connor Park to the south and Tanglehead to the north. And to the north, still have some undeveloped farm property. And then Connor Park Playground shown to the south. You can see the existing infrastructure, the outer loop infrastructure in that street cross-section. And to the west, you can see those single-family homes. And then you can see some undeveloped property on the east side of the outer loop, shown in the right. And so neighborhood service zoning designation does allow for studios and offices, you know, small neighborhood types of retail and service, including childcare and daycare. And six notices were sent out to property owners within two hundred feet, and four were returned in agreement. And those were received after the P and Z meeting. Zero were returned in disagreement. In terms of the compliance, we're showing partial with the future land use map, but compatibility with surrounding zoning, public facilities are available, and compatibility with the thoroughfare plan. The staff recommends approval of this rezoning request. And planning and zoning on July sixth recommended approval, six to zero unanimously. And be happy to answer any questions on this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Council. This item is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium or raise your hand in the virtual platform if you wish to speak. There being none, then I will close the public hearing on item fourteen and entertain a motion for approval.
Move approval of item fourteen as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Williams, second by Councilmember Morales. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Hi.
Councilmember Walker.
Hi.
Councilmember Williams.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Morales.
Hi.
Mayor Davis.
Hi.
Item fifteen is a first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance amending the City of Temple's Unified Development Code to require screening around specified utility facilities if the facility is located near residential area. Mr. Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may recall, we visited on this topic at a recent city council work session. This item has since gone to P and Z for their recommendation. A little bit of background, if you'll recall, Strategic Plan identifies places and spaces as one of our focus areas. And with many utility improvements on the horizon and keeping the spirit with this strategic plan, city staff is recommending that we update our screening requirements for gas line and regulating stations, electrical energy generating plants, electrical substations, sewer and water pumping stations, and sewer and water treatment facilities. You'll recall the discussion we talked about and what's in your packet with the staff recommendation is that any of these facilities located within a thousand feet of a residential zoning district or a platted residential subdivision would require that they be screened by an eight-foot tall masonry wall or precast concrete fence. I mentioned that on August third, P and Z visited on this item. And after some discussion with Taba and their recommendation, P and Z voted eight to zero to approve staff's recommendation with one condition on it, that they wanted to allow for an alternative screening method for sewage and water pumping stations. And as a reaction to that, what staff has proposed is that we allow with specifically sewage and water pumping stations, we allow screening to be either the masonry wall or precast concrete fence, or assuming that an HOA or POA is willing to maintain any landscaping that's around that particular lift station or pump station, that landscaping would be able to be to serve as that screening. It would require one canopy tree and six shrubs for forty linear feet of boundary. So that includes any street frontage there. And should they choose, if a berm is to be constructed, an elevated berm, three to four feet tall, then with no more than four to one side slopes, you can substitute fifty percent of that landscaping with that berm. So we'll get a picture here in a little bit that's going to show you a little bit more what that looks like. Again, what we're really talking about here is you see on the top, an electrical substation with standard chain link fence surrounding it. And on the bottom picture, you see a precast concrete fence. Same thing with a gas line regulating station. Top is your standard chain link fence, and the bottom is a precast concrete fence as well.
and the bottom is a precast concrete fence as well. What you see here is a lift station with, with three options. So in the top left corner, that's your, what, what we're doing currently, it's a standard chain link fence around the lift station. On the bottom left, you see a masonry wall. And then on the right-hand side in the center, what you see there is a constructed landscape berm. That's actually near the Temple Belton Plant, but you can see the, the equipment that's in the background is, is similar. So you're still going to have a chain link fence surrounding it. But the idea there is that you get some, some green space between any road or adjacent home. You've got some elevation that, that rises up to, to screen that. And then you have canopy trees and shrubs that are located in there as well. So you achieve the same ultimate goal there where you're screening that item. And, and it's not quite as in the view of the public eye. So with that, you have, you have four basic alternatives here. One, we have the original staff recommendation. And I would ask, when you, when you do get around to making a motion on this, that you, if you could include either to say that you want the original staff recommendation. Another alternative there would be that you could approve it with the P&amp;Z recommendation, including a landscape berm. If there are any other additional recommendations that City Council has, you could add to either of those options or, or we go back to the drawing board. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, just a reminder that when you do make a motion, I'd ask that you be specific in whether we're talking about an original staff recommendation or the P&amp;Z recommendation or some other item.
Just to be clear, if it's a bare chain link fence, it would at least have to be behind a berm?
Correct.
Not just landscaping?
And that, that only applies to lift stations and water pumping stations.
Right here is where Alan's pointing you.
So if you could go back to the language. So it's landscaping, but if they want to have less landscaping, that would be, you could replace burns for 50% of landscaping. So it'd be landscaping or landscaping and burns.
Say that again, what's the last sentence you said?
It's, it's either landscaping with all of the, the one canopy turning six shrubs for every 40 linear feet. Or you could do 50% landscaping and 50% burns. So the 36 to 48 inches tall.
It would still have the landscaping on all sides, it's just the total quantity. Instead of being one tree and six shrubs per 40 feet, it would go to one tree and six shrubs per 80 feet of boundary. So an example, we talked in the workshop about your standard 50-foot by 50-foot area that covers for a lift station, that's going to get you somewhere in the neighborhood of seven trees that would be spread around the entire boundary. And 48 shrubs that would be around that entire boundary. So the, the, whoever's constructing that station would have the alternative. And if they wanted to reduce that, they could build the berm so you raise it up. And then instead of seven trees, you would have four trees. And instead of 48 shrubs, you would have 24 shrubs.
And that's represented in?
In the P&amp;Z recommendation.
The thing you had highlighted, which has disappeared. Is that represented in the red?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Olson, this ties just to lift station, if you will, in HOA area. And that's so you'll have water to make sure the shrubs and everything stay alive.
Correct.
The HOA will be responsible for maintaining it.
That was the other caveat there is that either an HOA or a POA would have to agree to maintain that landscape so that we, we would not see an additional cost, operational cost there for watering and maintaining that landscape.
Sounds like a good compromise.
Otherwise, it's just the masonry fence.
Correct.
Anything else?
I want to thank city staff for taking this on. This popped up when a new substation was going into a residential area. And I think we all had concerns about it. We really took it to heart. And I know that the citizens are really going to appreciate not having to see the chain link fence with barbed wire wrapped around it across the street where the kids play. So thank you for taking this on.
Thank you. And really David and Brian and Amanda did all of the work. So we appreciate their support on that, on the short timeframe.
Very good. This item is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may do so. Please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Party Janzak, 12 North Fifth Temple. I'm here this evening representing the Temple Area Building Association. I was at the planning and zoning meeting and certainly we appreciated the presentation, but we became concerned from a development perspective. Many subdivisions, not all, but many have sewer lift stations or pumping stations that in some cases are just modest, larger manholes, larger than normal manholes. And they're covered with a metal cover, surrounded by a chain link fence. And they, there'll be a fence post with an electrical box on it and a red light. If we, if it had gone through or was originally proposed, that would be changed into a 50-foot by 50-foot by eight-foot-high concrete cube, which is aesthetically ugly and would certainly add to the cost of the lots being developed and subsequently for the cost of housing. And so we pointed that out. The staff recognized our concerns for that. And let me back up. In some cases, other than the, they're modest structures, maybe more than just a manhole. But again, it's the same thing. We're not talking a massive sewer lift station. We're talking an individual one in a subdivision where people live and drive by it all the time. And so I would tell you that between 6:30 Monday night and now, legal and planning got together and rewrote language for this. And Taba is on board. We think it's a magnificent compromise. It gives Brian a lot of options that he can work with, depending on geography and the lay of the land. We would recommend that you pass that. And we appreciate the staff's interest in working with us on that project. Any questions from us, to me?
Yes, you're recommending approval with the red highlights.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council, anything else? Anybody else? Anybody on the virtual platform? All right. Now at this time, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item number 15.
Make a motion to approve item 15, along with the P&amp;Z recommendation, including landscape berm alternative.
Second motion.
Have a motion by Councilmember Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Williams. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Councilmember Walker.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Moving on to item 16 is a first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the Tax Increment Finance Reinvestment Zone Number One, Financing and Project Plan for Fiscal Year 2022 through Fiscal Year 2031, to include recognizing additional tax increment revenue for real property improvements associated with the Hawn Hotel, Arcadia Theater and the Public Services Building. And appropriation of funds for an amendment to the Economic Development Agreement with the Turner Behringer Temple One LLC Group. Ms. Bernard.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item before you for the amendment was presented to the Reinvestment Zone Board on July 29th. And they recommended approval. And as it moves forward to view, it requires two readings related to it. But the city currently has an economic development agreement with the Turner Behringer Group for redevelopment and improvements, real property improvements to the Hawn Arcadia and Sears Building. And this item with the Turner Behringer staff, they have moved pretty far along in their design. And they came to asking for an additional incentive necessary to make the project financially viable due to the significant expense, expenses associated with the rehabilitating of the historic structures, specifically related to life safety improvements required for the high-rise designation of the Hawn Hotel. And as this, again, the amendment has not come before you, but the Reinvestment Zone is recommending approval of the Financing Plan Amendment in order to support that amendment. And the request would be for an additional $2 million in incentive. That incentive would be paid over 10 years at $200,000 a year. And just to note, important in this agreement or related to the amendment, if after completion and installation of the real property improvements required by this, by the amendment, that if the fair market value of the real, real property improvements do not equal or less than $12 million, that the amount of this incentive, that this amendment funds as incentives would be reduced proportionally. Meaning this incentive was based on a $12 million investment. And if it doesn't meet that, then it's less than that real property improvement values for the appraisal district. And this incentive is reduced proportionally. Just quickly on the Financing Plan Amendment, it increases tax revenues. There's currently no tax revenues, increment revenues included in the financing plan for the Hawn Hotel redevelopment. And it would increase over a 10-year period based on the $12 million investment. It would increase revenues a little over $3 million. And amendment would amend line 417, which is corridor enhancements. So $200,000 a year, that's an expense or expenditure that totals $2 million. And the difference between the revenue and the expenditure is just a move slightly over a million dollars. And currently that's being flowed through the fund balance of the Reinvestment Zone Fund. And in your agenda packet is the Financing Plan and also a summary Financing Plan in Detail, Project Plan. I think I failed to mention too, this, this goes through a 10-year period, 22 to, is it 23? 2031. And if, if the improvements aren't made or they're made later than planned, they're currently planning to complete these by December of '21. So this amendment is based on those improvements being completed at that date. If they're completed later than that date, you have to move amendment forward a year. Again, be happy to answer any questions related to this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Can we go back to the page showing the 10-year, this one? I always think in a situation like this, it's, it's important that we point out that in the tax revenues column, that those are taxes that are currently not being collected. I mean, starting in, in this chart, in 2022, that $288,000 will be new tax revenue. So it's, it's not like the city is handing out tax dollars that are already coming in. This will be new revenue and the city will be simply refunding or rebating back a portion of those revenues to the, to the client to make this project work. And we've all talked about over the years, the importance of the Hawn project and, and the Arcadia and the old Sears building and sort of what an anchor it can be downtown when done right and done with the right contractor or the right, the right group. So I just, again, I just think it's always important that at the, right now, there is $0 of revenue coming through on this project. And at the end of 10 years, at 2031, with the project on the ground up and running, there's a million dollars of additional revenue over that 10 years. I just, I just always think that's important to point out.
As well as the additional revenue that'll be, we plan to be generated by other things coming as a result of this.
Yeah, that million dollars is.
Very important. Yes.
Yeah, it doesn't include any sort of new tax revenue or anything. You know, sales tax revenue by more people.
Right, 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 right.
Good point. Thank you.
These improvements by December 2021?
Yes, that's our current, if, if approved. You're tracking August 20th for the agreement?
Yes, ma'am. So you will have the second reading of the Financing Plan Amendment on your August 20th council agenda. You need to approve this amendment in order to appropriate funds that would be necessary to consider the amendment to the Economic Development Agreement. So we plan to have the amended Economic Development Agreement on the August 20th agenda as well for your consideration. And the Turner Behringer team plans to break ground this fall, assuming that that amended agreement is approved and get started with the construction of the project. One other thing that I want to highlight, Mayor, based on your comments and Tracy's, is just to note that this incentive is performance-based. So the project has to be completed and open, CO issued. And the incentive is basically in arrears incentive. So I just want to, I think that's important because we're, we're partnering on incentives for a project that will be successful because this is, this is based on, this is a performance-based contract.
Very good. Thank you. Council, anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. This item is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on it may please step to the podium or raise your hand in the virtual platform to be recognized. Anyone here? Very good. Then at this time, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item number 16.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
That motion.
Have a motion by Councilmember Morales, a second by Councilmember Long, Madam Secretary.
Aye. Councilmember Walker.
Aye. Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Item 17 is a first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance designate, designating 103 East Central Avenue, Temple, Texas 76501, as a City of Temple Tax Abatement Reinvestment Zone Number 41 for commercial and industrial tax abatement. Ms. Myers, in the statements.
As you said, this is to consider the creation of new tax abatement reinvestment zone, number 41 in downtown. Under Texas Tax Code, Chapter 312, the City Council, City Council may designate an area of the city as a tax abatement reinvestment, reinvestment zone if the designation is likely to contribute to the retention or expansion of jobs or attract major investment in the zone that would be a benefit to the property and that would contribute to the economic development of the city. You have also developed and adopted your own standards for tax abatement. And you can consider designating a tax abatement reinvestment zone and authorize tax abatement if at least two of the following criteria are met. A maximum or a minimum increase in property value of 300%. Substantial contribution to redevelopment efforts. If the project has a high visibility or image impact or a significantly higher development quality. If it's in an area that might not otherwise be developed. If it can serve as a prototype or a catalyst for other developments of higher standards in the area. If it can serve as a stimulus for desired concentrations of employment or commercial activity. Or if it generates employment, then with greater employment that would otherwise be achieved in that area. And we have received an application from BKDM Investment, which is for the redevelopment of the historic professional SPJST building in downtown. And on the agenda today is the first reading of the ordinance that will create a tax abatement reinvestment zone for this project. At your next regular meeting, you will also be asked to consider authorizing a tax abatement agreement, an economic development agreement, and also extending a SIS grant for this project. This is a map. If you can see it, it's right there in the middle. The gray box, just right in the middle, shows the location in downtown. The project is going to consist of an estimated capital investment of approximately $3.8 million and proposes to add retail, one and two-bedroom apartments, rooftop amenities, a common area for the tenants, tenant storage units, and a fitness center for the tenants. And staff has reviewed the application and believes that the project meets the majority of the criteria in your standards for tax abatement. Specifically, it will involve more than a minimum increase in property value of 300%. It will make a substantial contribution to the redevelopment efforts of downtown. The project will have a high visibility, image impact, and is of significantly higher level of development quality. And also would stimulate desired concentrations of employment for commercial activity in downtown. The project will also expand the. The project will also expand the employment base, attract major investment, and contribute to economic development in the city as required by Chapter 312 of the tax code. Are there any questions?
Counsel?
No questions, but I'm just ecstatic about this whole project with the Hawn. And we waited 16, 20 years to have this revitalized. And we just want to thank all those that are involved to make it happen.
Agreed.
I'd just like to add, I was thinking the same thing. It's just, it's kind of amazing that these two projects are here together tonight. After, I guess it's been a little over a year, we had the downtown walk. It's just, it's historic and wonderful for historic buildings.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. This item is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on the matter, please do so. Step to the podium or raise your hand in the virtual platform. There being none, then I will close the public hearing on item number 17 and entertain a motion.
Make a motion for approval?
Second, Judy's motion.
Have a motion by Councilmember Morales, a second by Councilmember Long. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Long.
Yes.
Councilmember Walker.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye. Item 18 is a resolution to consider adopting a resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with MRB Group of Temple in the amount of $56,950 for design services relating to the construction of the East Temple Community Enhancement Center located at 201 South Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. Ms. Smith?
The City of Temple is partnering with Citizens for Progress. They own the property right there at the southeast corner of East Avenue B and South MLK Drive directly across from the festival fields where there's an existing structure. Looking at a design for a new construction of a building. We sent out requests to four different architectural firms. Two, MRB Group and Neil Architecture Group replied and provided proposals to us. And the team decided to move forward with MRB Group due to qualifications and experience. The design services will include a 2,000 square foot facility with office, training room, conference space, restrooms, great kitchen space, also a very nice outdoor space with off-street parking. We anticipate the new construction of a building to be $500,000. And we anticipate the design to be done in November of this year. Construction of the project will commence when funding sources are established to fund the construction of the building. With that being said, we would like to recommend adoption of resolution authorizing professional service agreement with MRB Group in the amount of $56,950. Happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Smith? Thank you.
Is this the same, Aaron, is this a historic picture of the same building? I can't quite tell. But there, you can see the arch.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I guess it was, it's a similar entrance there on that side street.
Yeah.
Did I read correctly, this is coming down?
Yes. We've looked at the building and it's just, it's beyond repair. There's a lot of structural issues. So we're going to demolish the building and put something up. Simple, I think there's, you know, talking to Sanghenet Crossley with Citizens for Progress. I think that we could, no, put something up that really looks really good in this neighborhood and has some of the aspects of the older building. And then we're also going to have, we talked about having a nice historic photograph of the previous building and telling the history of it. So that will state with the property.
Are we going to, when this building is taken down, assuming all of this comes about?
Yes.
Are we going to salvage pieces from this building that can be incorporated into the design?
That's something that we can talk to the architect about, MRB Group, and see if that would be possible.
I would highly urge that there have to be some architectural things that could be incorporated in to make, add to the field and the history.
The outside has been covered up, but we'll see what we uncover.
I don't know how old this photo is, but if you look in the bottom right hand corner at the gas prices.
I know.
I think 50s, 60s.
Cadillac over there.
Well, look at the cars.
I know, they're really neat.
Very good, very good. Thank you, ma'am. All right.
Counsel, I just wanted to mention that Erin's done a lot of work on this project. And she has worked to the questions of counsel. She's worked very closely with the stakeholders. And they have done their due diligence and have really worked through all of the options. And so this recommendation has been well vetted.
Anything else, counsel? At this time, I'll entertain a motion on item number 18.
Motion to approve item 18 as presented by Ms. Smith.
Second.
With the caveat, you try to incorporate some pieces.
We have a motion by Councilmember Long and a second by Councilmember Walker. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Councilmember Walker.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Epstein.
Your Protim Morales. Mayor Davis.
Aye. Item 19 reads, "Consider adopting a resolution pursuant to Chapter 2206, Government Code Section 2206.053, finding that one property situated in the Maximo Moreno survey, Abstract Number 14 of Bell County, Texas, is necessary for the proposed expansion of Avenue C and authorizing the use of eminent domain to condemn that property." Ms. Davis?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Do you want to speak on this?
As we discussed briefly in your work session, if you recall, at your last regular meeting, you approved the use of eminent domain to acquire eight properties that are needed for the construction of the East Avenue C Expansion Improvement Project. One of those properties was misidentified in the motion and in the narrative. And it's a strict state law requirement that we properly identify those before you can approve the use of eminent domain. So we do need you to make a new motion that includes that now properly identified property. And I put motion language at each of your places. And so if one of you, unless you have any other questions, if you would be, so kind as to do that motion language, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. I'll entertain a motion on item number 19.
Mayor, I'll make the motion. I move that the City of Temple approve Resolution Number 2020-0144-R and authorize the use of eminent domain to acquire fee simple title to a property necessary for the construction of East Avenue C Expansion and Improvement Project. The property is located in the Maximino Moreno survey, Abstract Number 14, Bell County, Texas, and physically addressed as 302 South 20th Street.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Long, a second by Councilmember Williams. Madam Secretary?
Member Long?
Aye.
Councilmember Walker.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye. Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting, and we are adjourned.